Hafedeh, Committee of the Whole is back from recess. We are now on Bill 172. As amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, an act to appropriate $3,500,000 from the 2021 Earn Income Tax Credit reimbursement and/or the 2021 General Fund unappropriated revenues to the Guam Historic Preservation Trust for the purpose of the revitalization and renovation of the historic Francisco Q. Sanchez Elementary School under the jurisdiction of the Humatec Mayor's Office. Senator Joe Sin-Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin my opening on this bill, I just wanted to make it a... I know that my colleagues were kind of bothered that BBMR wasn't here this morning, but I want to make it clear that after I spoke to him yesterday and after all the questions he was thrown at, it was under my belief that he didn't need to be this morning because he had some meetings he had to settle off dealing in financials. So I told him, as long as Mr. Byrne's here, I think that should be covered. That's my fault. I did ask him, and I need you to come back because they're going to probably ask you the same, generally the same question that are related in the other bills. Hopefully it doesn't drag us much. But with that, I apologize that Mr. Lester was attacked for that, and I want to make that very clear. I was the one that told him, no need, you've got Mr. Byrne. He's a very good representative of the Department Administration, handles all the checks. Moving along on that, Bill 172, there's 36 will be providing funding to the Guam Preservation Trust for the revitalization and renovation of FQ Sanchez Elementary School. We all know that in 2011, the Guam Education School Board voted to close the FQ Sanchez Elementary School. Just to advise the board, my colleagues, I was on the board. During my tenure on the board, I fought against closing FQ Sanchez because it was a matter of management of resources to keep the school open. I failed, I didn't succeed. The board was able to close it. It was placed under the authority of Parks and Rec, and two years later, under the Humatec Mayor's Office. The facility has been severely neglected, and it's unfortunate that we are letting an historic building run to the ground. One of the sad part was that when it was closed, they actually gutted the building. Instead of leaving it where it can be used by whoever takes over it, the building got gutted out by the agency that moved out of there. And that was the unfortunateness for the folks, the constituents in Humatec. The new funding source, and my colleagues are a reminder, we already got the letter from Revenue and Tax. So the part on the bill that says 2021 Earn Income Tax Credit reimbursement, that's not an issue no more. Don't even have to question it because it's not available no more. Moving along, the new funding, the other funding source is from the 2021 Unappropriate General Fund balance. We've heard from the fiscal team that the source identified in this bill will be adequate to ensure the historic building becomes home to Humatec Mayor's Office, a recreational center, a senior citizen center, a charter school. When I met with the folks in Humatec, they said, I met with several of the teachers, retired teachers, and they said, if we can get this building, we will be applying for charter schools so our student don't have to go to Marissa or any other school, and we do it all here in Humatec. And they would also have a shopette to sell local products to residents and visitors. Basically, it's similar to like a small, I guess, a GVB office, but I told the mayor, that'll be on you to make it viable and successful. The revitalization of FQ Sanchez will be maintained when these entities move in and utilize current funding and annual budgets and non-appropriate funds from their shopping and other revenue streams to maintain their facilities. Keep in mind that when we identify a senior citizen center, that's normally funded from public health. Once, if you have a senior citizen center, then they can start identifying that they need to fund it to keep it operating. That'll help maintain the building. And that will work out in the budget if this bill, when this bill passes. I look forward to the discussion on Bill 172, and I ask my colleagues for their support on this legislation as this will continue to preserve the rich history of our island, Sazusmasi.
Sazusmasi, Senator Sin-Augustine. We'll begin with Speaker Terlahi. Questions for the panel? Before we begin, I'll have the Sergeant-at-Arms swear our panel in. Again, this is a new bill, so we have to do it one more time.
Please raise your hand. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information they provide today, whether electronically and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Madam Chair, you may proceed.
Sazusmasi, Sergeant-at-Arms. Speaker Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll... So this money, this bill is going to appropriate $3.5 million to the Guam Preservation Trust to restore the school down in Humatec. And the uses are going to be for a mayor's office, municipal planning council office, youth center, senior citizen center, healthcare facility, and educational facility. The legislature had, in the 32nd Guam Legislature, transferred jurisdiction of this building to the mayor's office. And in 2014, they had made plans, or at least done a study, a projected cost of renovating the school. At that time, it would have cost $800,000, they testified, and with inflation, hiring, and other things, it has increased to, their estimate is $3.5 million. I was going to ask the Guam Preservation Trust, they're not here, but I was going to ask them because they had, at the time when they did the cost analysis and the design, you know, as part of the project, listed proposed fundings as the Humatec Community Foundation, USDA, GIDA, and GVB, Guam Visitors Bureau. So I wanted to ask them, you know, are they still able to get any funds from any of these Is any member of the panel aware of the answer to that question?
I'm not immediately aware, Senator, or Madam Speaker, of the availability of funds from the sources that you spoke to.
Senator, I am not aware of any type of funding available for that particular project.
All right. I didn't notice this prior to the public hearing, or I might have asked, but yeah. So I wanted to ensure that they've exhausted all other sources, if possible, including whether they had exhausted any or explored any grants to restore this building that is registered in the National Registry of Historic Properties. I also wanted to ask the Preservation Trust if this is the priority as far as, you know, they do a strategic plan, they did a Humatec revitalization plan, I think that lists this as one of the priorities, but I wanted to ask them as a trust, the Preservation Trust, whether this is, how this ranks in the list of priority projects for the trusts overall? And whether, you know, the board considered all of those priorities in its strategic plan and said this was the number one that we want to spend this $3.5 million on. They, the board did not testify at the hearing, it was the director, Joe Canata. And so, of course, the plan, as far as they've detailed, is excellent. I think it's an excellent use of the properties myself. And I'm looking forward to how they've described it will be when it is completed, but I did want to, just for the record, show that they've exhausted all these other funds that when they did the study, they laid out as the potential funding for this project. And that, you know, I see that GVB, through the GVB TAF, you know, tourist attraction fund appropriations over the years, we've also given some money to the Humatec Foundation. And I just want to ensure whether, you know, what the Humatec Community Foundation's might, contribution to this project might be as well, because they are listed as one of the proposed funding sources. USDA, you know, have we ruled that out? Or can they still pursue that? I would like to put that on the record while we, you know, so that we know for a fact that we have no other alternative except to fund this out of the few remaining dollars in the FY '21 excess revenues. So as you calculated earlier, yeah, we're down to about five or 16 if we include the $11 million in reserve, right? So we might be able to cover it with five, but it doesn't give you much wiggle room to cover vendors that have not been paid or any other thing. So, you know, I'm just concerned about that. We're getting down to the wire on that FY '21 excess and whether this is absolutely the priority that we should fund. Otherwise, I love the project, we love the people from Humatec, I think we should do it, you know, if we can. And I just want to confirm that this, of all the Preservation Trust projects, is a priority. We do know, we know we have many projects that have to be taken care of. All right, Sazusmasi, Madam Chair.
Sazusmasi, Madam Speaker. Senator Torres, a point of information from Senator Sin-Augustine.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little bit of information. This project at Humatec was actually pursued when I first got elected, and we were actually going after the hot bonds. Hot bonds, that was down at GVB, we're looking at that. But it was not the only project the Preservation Trust was pursuing. Just so everybody, if you can remember about it, but back then, they were also pursuing, the Preservation Trust wanted to do renovation and to build a inn or a hotel down in Inorahan. And the reason for that was to build up the tourism down there, and this was way before the pandemic. And as the clock kept ticking, and we kept trying to find the source of funding, the prices just kept going up. And as the clock keeps ticking, and we can't get them to start building it, we don't know yet if a year from today, it's going to jump again. And I'm hoping it doesn't go beyond the 3.5, otherwise, they're going to be struggling. And the 3.5 is what I got. I do have, I wish, I should have thought of it, I should have brought the floor plans, the whole drawing. I have it in my office, I've had it now for six years. It says the same thing, it's just the cost just keeps going up. And they're just hoping that they can get this off the ground. They're going to ask to consider the Inorahan project. That Inorahan project at that time was going to cost six to eight million. I'm going to bet that's double the amount. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sazusmasi, for your point of information. Senator Sin-Augustine. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
I don't have any questions at the moment, I just want to listen to some of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Duennias.
Sazusmasi, Madam Chair. You know, a few legislatures back, a good friend of mine, Senator Tommy Morrison, also fought to keep the school open, but he also did something else as well, and I know that many of us are familiar with, and that is to create historic Humatec in terms of a trail that meanders through the beautiful village of Humatec. And kind of gives, well, now with our visitor industry in disarray, we all know the reason, but kind of gives an opportunity for us locals as well, but of course, our guests, when they return, to have a chance to walk through the village and see historic sites. And I know that one of the things we really need to do is, we need to bring dignity back to that very, very important school, former school structure, and certainly a very, very worthy project. Madam Chair, you know, I think to go over the funds again and the funding sources and the like would be exhaustive, and I can understand even why the BBMR director probably would, thought yesterday that, I think we've rung this out pretty well. So I only got one question for Lester Carlson from BBMR, and I think this will kind of set the tone going forward for perhaps other funding bills that would come through. I'm probably not exactly the same, but I'm sure the process of review, law review, and bills that come forward to the governor for signature, particularly when they have a financial component to them, would include yourself and others, and the fiscal team to advise the governor on the disposition of a bill that would reach her desk. So I just have one poignant question. If this body were to pass this bill, would you recommend for the governor to sign it?
Thank you for that question, Senator Duennias, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for going through the math and ascertaining from the discussion yesterday where we are with the FY '21 revenues over adoption level. And she's absolutely correct, we're at about the $5 million level. So in preparation for today's hearing, I did reach out to the administration, and the support for the bill is there. The amount that is cited is consistent with their understanding of the needs. So not only would I recommend it, the administration is supportive.
Okay. I mean, it's important as we deliberate, because I think, Madam Chair, as we go forward, I mean, we've had the public hearings, and I think we, you know, I think we've resigned ourselves, not resigned ourselves, but we were clear now on what the ITC reimbursement is going to be. The ITC money is coming to Guam is in a trust fund, and that is the purview of the executive branch. And so now we're dealing with projects, and we've been even, you know, cautioned by the administration to look at the grand total of proposals that have been forward. And, you know, we have worthy projects, a list of worthy projects and things that we would love to do. However, we come up against these bills as they come forward, you know, maybe looking at times as though we're against projects, if we're not, we're trying to that, the funding sources. So Lester, I think that was important, at least to get that part on the record here, because at some point, we're going to probably bump up against a dollar figure that's going to be difficult in the event that the governor doesn't come forward, you know, with her fiduciary responsibility as putting the final ink to a bill that attests to the fact that this expressed priority is something that will be met with funding. You know, that, we're going to have to ascertain that for all projects going forward beyond any potential funding source capability. I know we're going to have members in our body, and I, you know, have to deliberate on this myself as to what are the true priorities. However, you know, this proposal's before us, and I needed to just make sure that that was on the record. That's all I have for now, Madam Chair, for this round of questioning.
Sazusmasi, Senator Duennias. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for the explanation of the support as well, and your explanation of the funding, and I thank you for that. The author of the bill also mentioned something I was familiar with as well regarding some small rooms where tourists can eventually stay down south, something where the villages can participate and make it their own as well. With our tourism industry as we see it, wanting to explore more, they're no longer ride the bus and go in these big groups. A lot of them are renting cars and venturing out on their own. Helping our villages, especially with these historical sites, is something we are proud to share with our visitors. And I think restoring this and building back respectfully and following the culture is what they come to Guam to see. So I'm sure BBMR and Adalup has done their due diligence, of course, like they do, in looking at all the federal funds that are available before touching other things that, before touching the general fund. And considering that, I think this is really important, that we can, we had the ability to move it forward as you showed us, and that we should get going, and I'm looking forward with this bill passing. So I thank you for that clarification and your work on this project. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Sazusmasi, Senator Moylan. Senator Ada.
I don't have any questions for this round. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sazusmasi, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment on this bill, Bill 172. I wasn't aware, Madam Chair, until we had the public hearing on this bill, back in the day when the legislature created the trust, people like Bell Ariola and Ted Nelson. The intention was to have the trusts be financed from the funds coming in from the building permits that were being paid, with the idea that the trust would be entrusted with the responsibility of prioritizing what historical projects would be maintained, what would be rebuilt. And I was very disturbed to find out that a couple legislatures ago, the legislature, the lack of their infinite wisdom, decided to gut the funding for the Preservation Trust and appropriate that money to the Guam Museum. Granted, the Guam Museum, I think we all recognize the beauty and significance and importance that the Guam Museum has, but we actually took, or the legislature at the time took, what was one of the rare things that actually get created from this legislative body that worked very well, and worked very well without being politicized or politicizing these historic projects. And there's such an extensive list of success stories of what the Preservation Trust, the board members, and yes, we talk about our esteemed Joe Canata, who heads the Preservation Trust and has done so for quite a long time, has been successful in addressing these issues. And now here we have this bill before us, Bill 172, that throws these type of projects back into the political arena where we're sitting here deciding what the priority should be, at a time when we really can't even determine if the funding is available to do it. And if we do have, we do fund this project, at least from the budget bill that the majority of our colleagues passed, we're going to be taking money out of the tax refund account, and we're going to be taking money out of the rainy day fund to fund it. So I have to say, I think we should do the right thing, restore the Preservation Trust back to their funding. I hope the finance chair will consider that. I introduced a bill last year, Bill 208, to do exactly that, to restore the funding to the Preservation Trust so that those with the heart and the expertise can go back to doing what they've done so well, rather than us piecemealing these projects and determining whether they're priorities or not. Of course, this project, who's going to argue against this project? Who's going to want to see this school deteriorate? All of those of us that have ever been to this school, I never attended it, but there's many occasions I was invited down when the students were there. I think we all know where this building's at, we all know the historical significance of this building. But here we are. Now what are we going to do? Piecemeal every project of the Preservation Trust? If we're going to do that, we don't need the board. We don't need to recognize the visionaries that actually designed and built and put that trust in place that was operating exceptionally well without our involvement, God forbid. But no, we want to get our fingers all into it, rather than doing what we should do, is restore their funding and let them do what they do very well. I would love to do this project. I am very passionate about the work of the trust. I mean, even legal issues with Pocket, the trust involved themselves in that, trying to protect and preserve, it's not necessarily all just the old historical buildings, but even the old tremor artifacts, the laddy sites, trying to protect those areas so they don't get bulldozed and destroyed. But if we're going to sit here now and politicize this process by, oh, okay, well, we like this project this week, and three months from now, we like another project, and oh, by the way, what's the priority of the Preservation Trust? Gee, we don't know, because the Preservation Trust isn't even here for us to ask those questions. So Madam Chair, I'm going to ask, is there any, was the Preservation Trust asked to be present? Or can we ask them? I mean, they are just down the street at the Luhan House. I mean, are they available so that these questions can be asked of them? If I can ask that question?
Sure. We'll take a brief recess. Ask the chair. We are back from recess. Senator Sin-Augustine, for a point of information.
Yes, I did communicate with the Preservation Trust. Mr. Canata's on his way. And just for information, I heard that, I think, the last speaker, or the current speaker, mentioned about a bill she introduced, I think it was Bill 208. It deals about restoring the Preservation Trust. Unfortunately, it's not referred to my committee, and if it was, we would be pursuing that, because I believe they need to be restored, and they need to bring this back up to Par, because it's something like, it should have gone a million dollars a year. Then they can identify the other projects that hopefully they can get off the ground. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sazusmasi, Senator Sin-Augustine. We will take a brief recess.
The committee of the whole is back from recess. We will swear in our panel member.
Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and no information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out? Madam Chair, it's under oath. May proceed.
Sido Smasi, Sergeant-at-Arms. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. Certainly appreciate Mr. Canata being able to come down at short notice. Sorry, that way I can see you, Joe. I wanted to ask, I mean, I know you have a number of projects that otherwise the Preservation Trust would be able to work on. And certainly we have this bill before us. I know some of our colleagues were asking in terms of priority. Obviously, for me, I'm very supportive of the Preservation Trust, Joe. It's my secret passion. I very much want to see and hopefully can work with the, our finance chair, Senator Sinoagustin, to restore the funding back to the trust so that you can do what you guys do exceptionally well in, with regards to prioritizing the restoration. And of course, we know it's not limited just to the buildings. I mean, it's the language, the culture, the music. I mean, the list goes on in terms of the work that the Preservation Trust does. But this bill specifically is before us in terms of priority. Where would this have been had it been your board to prioritize projects? So I know you have a number of them, an endless list of projects that the trust would love to work on. Assuming that this is real money, and that's my only reservation, if I don't vote for this bill, Joe, it's going to be because of that concern as to whether or not this is funding that's tangible and that you'll be able to access. But for the trust, and if you could just elaborate on how the trust has prioritized projects as you've, you know, in the past part of your funding being disseminated essentially from your operations, how was the trust operating so that you could effectively address these projects and prioritize these projects? And one last question, elaborate on the expertise that sits on your board with the Preservation Trust to oversee the mandate of addressing cultural and historic preservation. That's a lot of questions, but I'm going to ask with my few minutes, all I can.
Thank you, Senator, and I address the body. I will have to explain to you in sort of a nutshell how we prioritize the projects. But before I do that, I want everyone to understand sort of the process of preservation. So in preservation, you know, the very, very important process is documentation so that if anything happens to the building or whatever happens, that we still have preserve that legacy, we still have preserve everything that we feel that is significant to the people of Guam and that we put a lot of value to. And we do that with architectural and engineering design work, but before the A and E work, we do a historic structures report, meaning that there is the, there's a report that talks about everything from the building itself to the purpose of the building and why they use, what they use when they built that building. So all of this has been put together and we have, we have gone to all of the, or at least I would say most of the historic buildings and have conducted historic structures reports, even structural assessment, as well as an architectural and engineering design work. That's your first step of preservation. Of course, the next step of preservation is if we, if we feel that it is very, very important, then we have to seek the funding to either rehabilitate, reconstruct, or repair the historic building or historic sites. And so that's how we are able to look at, you know, the cost of the building, the, and especially the purpose for the building. So FQ Sanchez School obviously is at the top priority because it serves, it will serve much more people than if we had restored a home or restored, you know, some object or some, some small significant, you know, small but significant structure. And so that's how we had put together the FQ Sanchez School. Several years ago, we had completed the architecture and engineering design work. And at that time, the cost of the, it was estimated at a little over $2 million. So when we did, you know, our, our looking at inflation, looking at price index, looking at all of these things, we, we calculated and estimated to be 3.5. And while all of this was happening with, with the senator, the good senator, Joe Sinoagustin, you know, trying to get the bill in so that we can restore it, we went ahead and updated all of the design work by code again. We needed to do it because the law specifies that after so many years, we have to renew the stamp on the design work. So we had to do that. We spent the money doing that and as well as to do a real comprehensive, real comprehensive estimate, you know, and every, every month it keeps going up, you know? We're, we're estimating right now, if it's going to take us another year, it's probably going to go up $5 million according to the report. So that's what we're faced with, but we can do it if we all work together to do it. So the priorities right now is FQ Sanchez School, then we have three homes that the Guam Preservation Trust owns that we are going to, that we've already completed the architecture and engineering design work and all of the preliminary work. We have completed all of them and that's going to cost us about $2 million for, for the three homes. One of the home is here in Hagatna and two of the homes are in, in Alahan. So that's how we determine priority and that's how we, we approach preservation in that
I know I had a couple other questions with regards to your board. I know you just don't have anyone on your board. I mean, you have certain positions that, certain professional positions that sit on your board. If you could elaborate on who, you don't even need to tell us their names, but what positions that you have that bring the expertise in overseeing the work of the Preservation Trust?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
In terms of the, the board qualifications, you have certain positions there on your board that oversee the projects, right? That, that prioritize determine what projects the Preservation Trust should pursue. Who are the, I mean, you don't need to tell us by name, but the different type of professionals that, that oversee these projects?
The Guam Preservation Trust comprised of five disciplines and each discipline is represented by a professional. One of the discipline, of course, is architecture. One is archaeology. One is culture, cultural culture, history, and planning. And so we don't depend on just the architects. We depend on all of them to make it a full wholesome project. We still need archaeologists to, to make sure that, that we protect what's underneath there. We, we, we need the, the historian and, and the planners to document all of this and of course, the perspective of the cultural culture, how significant and what do we want to all of the building if we're going to be able to restore it?
Well, and I'll ask the last question for this round and certainly allow my other colleagues, but what has happened since your funding was taken away from the Preservation Trust in terms of your ability to actually be able to go out and pursue? So, because I, I don't know how many times you've had to come before the legislature for funding, once you guys were independently given your, your funding source.
So we have prepared of, you know, just for us, we have prepared a, an analysis of the impact of, from, from the appropriations by the 33rd Guam Legislature in regards to Guam Preservation Trust's account. And basically what it is, is that we were, the, our funding source was taken, 50% of the funding source was taken out and then on top of the 50% funding source, then $100,000 on top of that, taken out to other Guam agencies. But Senator, if you really read the law, it just went against the law that created the Guam Preservation Trust. It went against the law that says that the funding shall only be used for the trust and not for government operations. So what that did was it dropped our funding ability, our revenues dropped more than 50%. Right now, we're only getting annual monies for basically operation and, and some programs and whatever architecture and engineering design work that we can do. Just so that we can preserve it in that, in that respect, that we're preserving whatever the structure is by documenting all of that.
I, I appreciate you, Joe, providing us that information and certainly I, I'll, I'll move on to the next round and then maybe we can have more questions, but I appreciate you being here and certainly providing answers to the questions that I have. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Vice Speaker, Munia Barnes. Thank you. Senator Jim Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kanata. You did, you mentioned the 50%, the legislature that we cut your budget and I did see that in reference to another bill. So I appreciate you reminding us of that since we're coming up for a budget hearing. And this happened back in 2015 that I see, and you recommend that the legislature restore your funding to 100%. So thanks for bringing that to attention. Thank you for pointing out how your priority list and how you see this as a, as a special project, but in addition to that, of course, the governor is also supporting of this bill. So I, I'm happy that we're able to do something that the, the administration is also focusing on as well. I've seen the funding source coming from BBMR is, is not, nor, no longer a questionable issue and I'm looking forward to supporting this and moving it fast to, to help and build to have these attractions for cultural and, and also for our visitors to come to want, to really respect and, and enjoy and help build the economy a little as well. So I thank you for your presence and I'm, I'm hoping this moves forward. Thank you very much, sir.
Sutusmasi, Senator Moylan. Senator Taidegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All for day, Joe. It's good to see you as always, wishing you good health and appreciate actually the, how quick you got down here. You know, I'm going to fully support, you know, Senator Brown's bill that helps restore back to what the Preservation Trust was receiving and we'll do our best to try and get this. We already spoke with Senator Sinagustin to try and move that bill forward by taking it out from another committee. So you, you have my commitment on that. But there's been a lot of concerns among this excess revenue, knowing about the EITC funding. Now that you know, you probably read in the news that it's, it's moot and now we have to find some other sources, sources that hasn't even been audited yet at this point. I don't want to bring hope into anybody's lives right now. I mean, there's about how many other bills that are out there, you know, 10,000 for UOG. There's other bills that set aside funding, but you know, there, there is no money for that at this, this point. So I appreciate all that you do and, and I hope you understand, you know, that I want to be fiscally responsible when it comes to money and, and putting it in the right, right areas that desperately need it. And I truly believe that, that your project is, does desperately need it, especially now because of the cost of, the rising cost of equipment as well as supplies and, you know, building materials going up, not just that, the labor involved into it. So hopefully we can get this done and maybe done in the budget bill, you know, and at least we have, you know, funding that's there and for sure and get this done. But again, I appreciate all the hard work and, and thank you so much for the, what you're doing for our island to preserve our culture and our heritage. Sutusmasi.
Sutusmasi, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Senator Pito Trelahi.
Joe, thank you very much for sharing this moment and discussing the, not the problem of the situation. I just wanted to find out, have you gotten any scope of work for the whole entire project?
Senator, we are ready to go for bid. We're ready to go for bid for three projects.
No, but don't you do a scope of work first before you even go in for a bid?
Yes. The bid documents are already completed. Once we get the funding, then we go out and put it on the ad and the bidding begins.
Oh.
We actually procure our construction activity with, again, the authorization of the DPW director.
Based on the $3,500,000, Joe, versus the scope of work, do you have, would you have sufficient amount to, to do the project?
Senator.
Nation, the scope of work?
I, I, if, if you ask me, if you ask me to, to put an amount to it so that we all feel comfortable about this project going through, of course, I'm going to, I'm going to increase the budget to $5 million because that, that is the latest comprehensive report that we got from the architecture and engineering design work, that this is what we're seeing right now. And this is including everything. The, the, the estimates actually look at real comprehensive. They look at the labor, they look at the materials, they look at all of this stuff and the escalation and especially labor. It is, it is, I would say, if I was going to be very, very comfortable, I would say $5 million.
And I'm sure that if we kind of just prolong the, the project, the price is going to even go.
It's going to increase.
Go up like you, you mentioned $5 million and I wouldn't be surprised if it goes up that far. Joe, I want to thank you again and you get my support ahead. I, I'm full supporter of the bill. Thank you very much.
Sutusmasi, Senator Trelahi. Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe, thank you for coming down. We've been working on all Preservation Trust for, I think, six years and we're not done yet. And you know that, I, I call you, you call me and we always say is, where can we find the money? That's all we've been after so we can put it on the list. I know you mentioned some of the projects in Iran and I mentioned earlier to the folks, to my colleagues here, there's other bigger projects in Iran you, we were talking about six years ago. It was a hot bond and I don't know, I, I don't, I don't think you need to go into it because then they're going to be thinking about 10, 12, 15, maybe up to $20 million. But thank you for your support. The sooner we, I honestly believe, and maybe you can comment, the sooner we can get this bill passed, the governor sign it at 3.5, it will be the bidding price. That's when other people can compete and hopefully the 3.5 will cover it. If not, then we can, we can figure another route, but at least we'll get close to 100% done.
Yes.
I think with the, with the folks in Humatic, the proud folks of Humatic are going to come on and say, my lady Tatudal, we'll clear this part for you, we'll move this. That's where cost comes down. And that's what we're looking at. The people of Humatic are, I've been waiting for this. I committed to them when I was on the board and I was the chairman, I will not support the closure. When it got closed and I got elected, I said, I'm going to, going to find a way and just keep pursuing it. And we're at that point now. So thank you, Joe, and thank you for all your efforts and communicate because I, I advise my colleagues, I do have the, the drawings and everything at the office.
Yes, I have the drawings for all of our projects.
Yes. And then we'll, we'll be talking more in the future and seeing how, what, what else we can go after. And I'll invite my colleagues to take a look at it when we, when we're sitting down or if they have a chance to visit you, they can look at all of this. But thank you for your, for your visit today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sutusmasi, Senator Sinagustin. Senator Trelahi, we're now beginning the second round of questions. Speaker Trelahi.
All right. My first round of questions was directed to the Guam Preservation Trust, but they weren't here. So could I ask them to answer those, please, and get my round back? Because I also have questions for this other part of the panel. Notwithstanding the rules, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Nina She just wants a question to be asked. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll give my time that I had left to, so we can wrap this up. I don't think it'll be that long and then Preservation Trust can answer that and, and no problem.
Okay, thank you very much. Senator Sinagustin has yielded his time to the speaker to ask the questions from the first round.
Thank you. All right, that'd be great. So I, I had asked, and you have kind of indicated that this is one of the top three projects in the strategic plan for the Preservation Trust?
I believe it is, Senator. We had developed a strategic plan five years ago. We are doing a strategic plan this year for the next five years and FQ Sanchez School has been identified as, as one of the top projects in queue.
Top how many?
If, if not, I, I can't recall right now, but if, if not, it is the first project.
Okay. And then when this was, project was originally proposed and you did the cost estimates and up on your website of $800,000, I know that you've updated that now, but there was proposed funding for the project from Preservation Trust, Humatic Community Foundation, USDA, GIDA, and GVB. So I just wanted to know what has happened to these other proposed funding sources or have any other federal grants been attempted for this project?
So Speaker, we, we attempted to write a grant to the National Park Service and that grant was denied. We are attempting to write another one again so that we can be able to look at where we, you know, where we were missing some points to that. It was a competitive grant. The, the other question about other funding source, we, it, it was, it was thought of as part of the hot bond, but it was never listed in there.
All right, the $5 million for the palatial is still available in that hot bond. I think they're debating to proceed with that or not. As a preservation project, do you believe this should be priority over that?
So, so we, we were not the, we, Speaker, as far as the, the hot bond, those, those projects were developed and put forth before by GIDA and GVB. The Guam Preservation Trust was only as a consultant to these guys. But those were the projects that were identified by Guam Visitors Bureau and Guam Economic Development Authority. Of course, we had some, we had some advice to them, but not sitting and prioritizing the work that they, they have put together.
Right, but would you prioritize this with your background? Would you prioritize this project over that?
You know, Senator, I, Speaker, I, it's so difficult. I'm, I'm going to be biased because I am from the village of Humatic and I'm going to say FQ Sanchez is much more priority and for, for many reasons. Number one is that they're looking at bringing their school back. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the mayor and the people, but I'm from there and they want their school back. This is an opportunity for a heritage charter school. They want their senior citizens folks back. This is an opportunity to get them back to the village. You know, this is an opportunity also to showcase the history and the people of Humata. And that has been, that has been incorporated into the design of this, the rehabilitation of the school. So I would say comparing the uses, usage of both projects, I would say I would go with FQ Sanchez School for, for the reason that this is for our people.
Yes, yeah, I agree with you, the importance, senior citizen center, youth center, yeah, municipal planning and healthcare facility, educational facility. Thank you. Okay, so and to the, the rest of the panel, so you said that the governor supports this project and the use of, you know, the remaining FY21 excess funds for this project, $3.5 million. And I just want to run by you, so in one of the fiscal notes, you gave a list of bills that are still outstanding. So we did the Guma one this morning. There's a $3.5 million proposal for the NAFTA memorial. This is for the reburials of the, the, you know, human remains. That's the same amount as this bill, $3.5 million. There's a emergency boat access, $1.5 million. There's the GWA water and sewer infrastructure, $5 million. Mayor's Council renovate and repair a sports facility, $9.5 million. UOG, $10 million. It's just, and I think we're going to look at a bill a little later today, $500,000 for a veterans serve bill. But so would you say, Mr. Carlson, that with your, you know, understanding that this bill would be the priority over all the rest of these projects?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The bills that we are discussing now, including if the body, you know, again, if the body passes the bill 170 and 172, we're going to be at $3,750,000. We've already established a, a comfort range of the $5 million. And if the other measure that's on the agenda is passed by the body, that's $4,250,000. So we're in that comfort zone, but I will, the governor has disseminated her ARP spending plan and some of the items that you mentioned are actually covered, like funding for GWA for water and sewer improvement is actually covered in the ARP spending. There is funding at about $3.5 million for the UOG cultural repository. I'm not really sure the scope of work, but I was with Senator Brown actually recently at, at the university and I was very surprised. at at the university, and I was very surprised, pleasantly so, that the building is just about done. And there is funding set aside for the operational needs and equipment needs for that facility. So some of the some of what it is that's that you've described will be taken care of with ARP money. And we did ask yesterday for a prioritization, and if the amounts that we're talking about in this session represent the priority of the legislature, then Mr. Byrne has committed to transmit that information to the auditors so that it's incorporated in the final FY21 audit and is identified as FY21 related, and therefore the audit would encompass those costs. So we're doing our level best to try to work with what it is that it is that you guys are entertaining. And, you know, we think if you guys are gonna pass these measures, then the support is there and the funding's there.
So if these get passed first, they'll be funded, you're saying? And yeah, I guess I'm just concerned. So we would have to find other funding sources for things like the emergency boat access on the other side of the island?
If I'm not mistaken, that might be something that we're looking at from another grant, like a TAP grant or something. I heard about, this is in Iran?
Again?
Yeah, I I think I remember.
Talaful.
Oh, Talaful. Yeah, I think I actually heard something about that the other day. So there there might be, you know, one of these federal sources that is going to be addressing that. I can get back to you, but I'm I'm pretty sure I I heard that very, very recently. So again, some of the the items are being addressed in in another fashion. Not all, certainly.
Yes, okay. All right. I think that's all my questions, Madam Chair. And thank you to the appropriations appropriations chair for yielding his time. Situs Masih. Situs Masih, Mr. Canata.
Situs Masih, Speaker. Senator Torres.
Thank you. I do not have any questions or comments for the panel. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair. Just want to thank Joe Canata for coming down and giving us extensive information outside of the appropriation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Situs Masih, Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Mr. Canata. Thank you also for BBMR for clarifying and further explaining to us and basically repeating to us that this is pretty secure in funding. This is where we want to go with the Preservation Trust, that we had the governor's support behind this, and that from all your studies, this is important. I can't see why I can't support this, and I'm looking forward to this moving quickly forward with the body. I thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Situs Masih, Senator Moylan. Senator Titekwi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question to Lester. Lester, you asked me to make sure I had a copy or if I had a copy of the ARP latest report, and I did pick it up today and looked at it. And I noticed that everything has basically been allocated toward ARP funding. Could this change, you know, as we recently, I think the program Salapi just came out yesterday, was mentioned, and that it was going to use ARP funding. And when I looked at this report, I didn't see where the allocation for this program was going to be. Is it something that's going to be adjusted in the next report?
Yes, I believe that that one is dated probably February 5th, if you're looking at the latest one. The announcement came out yesterday. So we're going to be moving funds to be able to accommodate for that program.
How much is that going to cost?
Program Salapi, number two, you told me like maybe 25? You haven't ascertained it yet, but it's going to be in that neighborhood, 20.
Senator, we we haven't ascertained the cost yet. That's what we're doing now. The program came out yesterday, so we're going to ascertain the amount and advise Mr. Carlson so that he may make the appropriate transfer.
Do you have an estimate?
Yes, we have an estimate based upon slightly different assumptions from the ones that came out in the executive order, and it's somewhere between 21 and 25 million.
21, between 21 and 25 million?
Yes, Senator.
Has, well, I'm pretty sure, Joe, you've you've probably reached out to the governor, especially with the ARP funding, you know, available. Have, well, I'm hoping you did, Joe. I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, but did you reach out to the governor's office for this funding?
Yes, Senator.
Okay. Has the administration looked into providing the funding for this project? I mean, it's obvious, you say you support it, the governor supports it, and ARP funding is, you know, right at the fingertips, in the bank. Has the governor considered providing the funding in the event this doesn't get through? Mr. Byrne? It looks like Lester is frozen. Well, now I'm asking Mr. Byrne, because it's obviously you're frozen. If we were on Zoom, you'd be frozen.
Now, now that Mr. Carlson is unfrozen, I think he might.
Okay, he's unfrozen. The Wi-Fi is in effect now. So, yeah, go ahead.
So are you asking me?
I am now, since you're unfrozen.
Yeah. Senator, the the funding for the ARP is not set in stone, as evidenced by the announcement yesterday. And further to what Mr. Byrne said, there is going to be an application period, and I believe it begins, I don't know, February, I mean, March 15th, if I if I remember correctly. So there there is going to be an adherence to some of the requirements of the final rule for this program. And as evidenced by what came out yesterday, there is still flexibility. I I'm not personally aware of whether or not, and maybe Mr. Canata has more recent information, but I'm not aware of any funding going to the Historic Preservation Trust from ARP currently.
Okay, well, it it looks like Mr. Canata is actually needs 5 million, not 3.5, a little bit more. Maybe continue to reach out to the governor's office for that, you know, assistance. The other question I have is, since EITC is not available anymore, which you said yesterday is is moot, then does that mean that in FY23, we're going to be in the hole 40 million dollars, based on the bills that were passed, 36-56 for the hospital appropriating? I mean, the first year in FY22, it appropriated from the earned income tax. Well, we know that's moot, but the second part of the bill says every year after that. So Bill 30, I mean, Public Law 36-56 at 20, 35 million, and then Public Law 36-57 for DOC at 5 million. Does that mean that based on the law, we would still be in, we'd have to come up with 40 million for FY23?
No, Senator. As a matter of fact, I think we talked about that a little bit yesterday. We're gonna have to revisit those authorizations, because given the information provided by DRT yesterday, those reimbursements, I think it's Section 6, if I'm not mistaken, earmark reimbursements to be put into a general fund account to be able to provide the financing for both the hospital and DOC. So since we're not getting the reimbursement, we, as a as a group here, led by the legislature, we're going to have to revisit that whole structure, because we're not in a hole, because we're not getting the reimbursement, and we can't finance anything because we don't have the wherewithal. So we're gonna have to go back to square one. I think that the EITC advance provides the opportunity to be able to revisit this with some confidence that our tax refund liability will be mitigated substantially by the EITC advance. Therefore, monies should be available, and I think that's a subject for discussion sooner rather than later. But we're not in, we we won't be in a hole. The obligation never presented itself as an obligation to be able to get in the hole.
Well, according to the bill, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Carlson, it, the first year is from reimbursement of earned income tax credit. After that, every year after that, the funding will come from the general fund. It doesn't say EITC. It said it'll come from the general fund. So FY23, we're going to be in the hole 40 million if we don't address it. Because right now, you know, here we are looking at excess revenue. We still have the reserve at 11 million that we're not sure. By the way, since we spoke about the spoke about the reserve yesterday, did you have a chance to see if there was an update? Because right now I have a September 30, 2021, at 11 million. Did you have a chance to review what's left in there in the reserve?
No, I did not. But I'm looking, if I may, going back to what you stated earlier, Section 6 says earned income tax reimbursements. Since we never got the reimbursement, Senator, you can't book the revenue. So I I think the premise under which you're pursuing that line of questioning is is flawed.
I'm showing here that Public Law 36-56 enacted in October 13, 2021, sets aside 35 million from earned income tax reimbursement for FY22 only. 35 million shall be appropriated from the general fund annually thereafter.
Correct. But we didn't, we didn't get the reimbursement.
Yeah, but we're not talking. Lester, you can look at it that way and say, 2022, we didn't get the, fine, that's moot. We've already agreed to that. But thereafter, it comes from the general fund to fund the 35 million. So that that's a question that we need to
Yes.
find out, because I I don't even know what the administration is doing as far as any kind of savings, you know, for future issues. Are you considering any type of funding setting aside from the general fund revenues for future emergencies? I mean, my goodness, the world has gone through a pandemic, and I don't know if the the federal government is going to continue to bail everyone out. We're going into recessions. Our mortgage interests have gone up. And and I don't see anything that this administration is doing to set aside funding for a rainy day or for emergencies that might come up. Oh, my time is up.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Thank you so much. Thank you for unfreezing, Lester.
Senator Pito Turlahe. Thank you. We will take, that completes our second round of questions. We will take a brief recess to excuse the panel. Thank you very much for your time today, gentlemen. Thank you very much for your time today, gentlemen. The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized for your closing.
Can you just give me one minute? It's printing, so I can read my closing, even though my closing is very short, very short.
We'll take a moment to recess.
Yeah, real quick.
The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. We will now begin the third round for any comments and amendments. Speaker Trelawney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I feel, you know, more confident that this is the priority of the Guam Preservation Trust as far as projects. I do see the value in restoring this place, which will, it's a, it's a living place. It will be a living place for the people of Humatec, and I believe all of Guam. And so I have no objections whatsoever as to going forward with this project. My, my only concern on this bill is that we're dealing with very little money left in the FY 21 excess revenues, $5 million. This is $3.5 million. We have other priorities that have been, you know, put into bills, and I, and just not, I guess, and confident that either the governor is going to take care of those priorities with ARP funds, or that, you know, these are truly, we've prioritized, you know, for the legislature above all these other projects. I'm especially concerned about this emergency boat access for the eastern side, which has been long overdue. I know there's supposed to be federal funds available for that, but it's, it's taken years already. And so I've asked Mr. Carlson for an update on that. And so the, all the other projects that were listed. I think this project that we're looking at here for Humatec, they're ready to go. And I think it's a great project for ARP funds because they're, they're building a healthcare facility, or they're going to incorporate healthcare facility into Humatec and, or perhaps even infrastructure funds. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because some of these other projects, for example, the NAFTA and reburials, might not be eligible for ARP funds. And so I'm just going to put that on the record. That's really my only concern, is that we want this project to go forward. I believe there are ways to make this go forward. But if we're going to look at the overall, you know, needs of the government, including, you know, they haven't mentioned any of the, you know, underfunding of public health or anything like that. So we're, you know, guessing that they have ways to cover those right now. But just want to make sure that if they could use ARP or infrastructure funds for this project, that they do that, and that we reserve this, what is left in the FY 21 funds for other projects that are clearly going to be ineligible for ARP or other federal funds. All right, and otherwise, of course, I support this for the people of Humatec. And, you know, I believe the mayor has done an excellent job in, in getting support for this and showing how it's going to impact their community. And as well as the Preservation Trust, the Humatec Foundation. And actually, if you look at their petition, it's signed from people all over the island. So again, I think they've done a good job in supporting this. I just want the government as a whole to look at all sources of funding and make sure that this is the best use of these particular funds versus any other of the funds available to us right now. Sutus Massey, Madam Chair.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. Senator Torres for comments. Senator Duñez. Senator Moylan. Senator Ada. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As I mentioned earlier, I'm sure no one here is going to come out in opposition to this project. I think it's a very important and valued project, and one that has been long, it's, it's been a long time waiting to, to actually get this project put in place. I certainly appreciate Mr. Kanata coming down and providing us the information elaborating on, on what components have already been put in place to actually get this project off the ground. If this was a clean appropriation, Madam Chair, again, I would have no reservation. And that's what, what concerns me in this process of, you know, we're like playing the bullseye with our darts here, and maybe if we hit the bullseye, we may hit it, maybe not. And I don't think we can appropriate that way. The earned income tax credit was looked at as a source of, of funding, and boy, we jumped on it. Some of us jumped on it so quickly, we got dizzy. And then to find out that it's not a source of funds at all that we can appropriate, and then we're saying, okay, then the unappropriated funds, and that's, that'll be the other option. And yet in the budget, you know, majority of our colleagues here in the legislature determined that any excess funds would go to pay tax refunds. 70% of that would go to pay tax refunds, 30% of that would go to the rainy day fund. It's not a vote that I made on that budget bill, but for the majority of the members of this body that did vote on it, that was the decision that was made. And now we're coming back piecemeal at a time, saying, oh, we want to appropriate to all these other valuable things, so I guess we'll just take the hands, take the money out of the hands of the taxpayers, or we take the money out of the rainy day fund that we're finding from the financial information that since yesterday is kind of becoming a little more clear to me. I hope it's becoming clear to most of us here, that, you know, all this money that's been flowing is not flowing so quickly, and that it's drying up. Because now we're down to, whoa, maybe 5 million or less. That's in the big world of budgets, and we're looking at over a million or close to million-dollar budget, billion-dollar budget for the government of Guam, that's nothing. So I hope we're mindful of that. We all want to do these good things, but can we afford it? And we're, you know, we're literally robbing Peter to pay Paul, or, you know, robbing from Paul to pay Peter. That's exactly what we're doing. But when we're saying and making a commitment, and then a few months later, we're reneging on that commitment, and now we're saying, oh, the tax refunds is not a priority. The rainy day fund is not a priority, because all of a sudden now we have these projects that we'd like to do. And of course, I'd love to see these projects. I'm such an advocate for the Preservation Trust. I was so disappointed to find out when we had the hearing on this bill that the funding had been taken away by previous legislation. It literally disseminated the ability of this Preservation Trust to do their main mission. And I certainly will advocate and work with you to, to get that restored, so that they don't have to come to the Guam Legislature and politicize every project of all the vast, you know, chest of, of, of projects they've already completed, from, from restoring buildings to the culture, to the language, to the music. I mean, they've all been able to do that without us, without our fingers involved in that process. They've done it exceptionally well, and I would definitely want to see it restored. So that's my reservation, is the funding aspect of this. And I hope, colleagues, we are much more responsible, because as the money dries up and tough decisions have to be made, we need to prioritize what we determine is the most critical. And by all means, if you're going to make a commitment and a decision, at least stand by it. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes.
Sutus Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, just to state my comment on and my support for Bill Number 172-36, and thank the author for giving me an opportunity to be one of the co-sponsors. And as you listen to a lot of the testimonies, and I also want to thank Mr. Joe Kanata for being here. I want to thank the team of the Guam Preservation Trust for all the work that they do and their due diligence, inclusive of the Board of Directors for the Guam Preservation Trust. And this topic of discussion didn't just happen overnight. This has been years and years, and I just want to say that even with its significance and why this was not, this facility was not just listed with the Guam Register Historic Places, but it was also listed with the National Register of Historic Places deemed to be of exceptional importance as a justification for its placement in the National Register. Madam Chair, I, we, we talk about our, preserving our history, we talk about advocating, we talk about truly sharing with the rest of the world who we are as island people, and, and this, this facility means a lot. And I've always supported the efforts, I will continue to do so, and I think the author understands why we, we continue to have to fight for this. And like I said, it just didn't happen overnight, it's been years. So I stand in full support, and I really hope that my colleagues can see it and support the same efforts. Sutus Massey.
Sutus Massey, Vice Speaker. Senator Telotidugui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no doubt that we all support the intent of this legislation, and how much assistance it'll give to the village of Humatec, even those in the South. You know, I should know, I'm, when I was raised in the South, and anytime it comes to road repairs, or building infrastructures, or school repairs, they always seem to be last on the list to be addressed. I understand the importance of this, and the reason why we're doing this, and that's why I'm trying to advocate, since we had the administration here today, to help us assist them right now, because there's art funding available. It's obvious that they have, they have about, they're going to readjust the report that they gave us, which about $419 million still has not been, is, is a balance, has not been spent. So there's definitely room to assist this project. Not only that, but we know that it's going to cost additional from 3.5 to about 5 million, according to Mr. Kanata. But the situation here lies on being responsible, responsible with the taxpayers' money. That's our job, ensure that we are spending funding that's available, that are, that's there, that's real, and not jumping the gun and using a credit card, oh, we'll, we'll pay for it now and then later on have to pay for it later. With funding we're not even sure is all there. I mean, there are other things that, that are going to come into play this year. For an example, Medicaid. I heard there's going to be a Medicaid shortfall for FY 22 if the emergency declaration is not extended. And even if it is extended, they may have a shortfall of $700,000. And without that emergency declaration, they're looking at $1.5 million that we're going to have to come up with. And that's just Medicaid. There are other issues that are going to be coming to our plate, and we have to be able to at least have some kind of funding to address those emergencies. You looked at the breakdown that was given to us. Tax refund, tax refunds vendor, vendor payables at 20 million. Shortfall for special funds, 20 million. A deficit of 1.5. War claims, 10 million. And then they bring up the GFD overexpending of $5 million. Well, I can tell you, based on the public, of the budget bill that we passed for FY 22, and the letter that I gave to this administration from the Attorney General's Office on the language in that bill, that they need to come to us if they're going to pay anything from GFD, if they're going to pay any deficit, or if they're going to pay out any special fund shortfall. Madam Chair, if you take Bill 170, 172, 227, you're left with $1.25 million left. That's it. How much of that, 70% of that, if we keep that intact, should go to tax refunds? That's so, so minimal. So minimal. Not only just tax refunds, but for a rainy day fund of 30%. At least we can be responsible enough to wait for the audit. And that's how I explained it to Mr. Kanata. I support his project, but I can't support this bill that I feel is irresponsible. I mean, look what has happened already with the EITC. Everyone flying to put out legislation, good due bills, and then we're come to a point where we have to tell every single one of those $121 million worth of funding, those people receiving, that it's not going to happen now. that it's not going to happen now. Our job is to be physically responsible with our, the people's money, the hard-earned tax-paying people of our community. And instead, we just go and start a spending spree without even thinking of the future, without even having that responsibility of being accountable and at least allow the public auditor to look at this. We have that opportunity during the budget bill. We should do it then.
Thank you, Senator Tello, your time is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Pedro Trelawney.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, being a contractor for the longest time and the project that we anticipate to finance, and that is why I asked for the scope of work, because three point five million is not going to be enough, so we better, better be prepared to find the money before they even start the project. Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Situas Masi, Senator Trelawney. Senator San Agustin, you're closing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After hearing my colleague speak, and for the others that didn't speak, I'm under the safe assumption their support of this bill. And they all, and everyone here understands the importance of funding the revitalization and renovation of FQ Sanchez Elementary School. For many of you, I was assigned to the South as a police officer many years ago. Many of you were still problem school, elementary school. But it's been a long time coming for the people of Humatak, Guam Preservation Trust, and the historic FQ Sanchez Elementary School. It's been a decade of waiting, and now the time has come for the people of Humatak to have their historical school restored and provide a sense of community and sustenance with its economic growth. Madam Chair and my colleagues, I ask for your support for this bill. Funding has been identified, the source of funding. As we go down the line and we start talking about any other funding source, participate when we talk about money, when we get to the issue of money, and then we can move from there. Thank you, Madam Chair, and with that, I'm ready, I can move on the motion?
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that Bill 172-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation and Housing, with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to be placed on the third reading file.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Take a brief recess. We're back from recess. Senator San Agustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill Numbers 202-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing, and further amended on the Committee of the Whole, and Bill 170-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and Bill 172-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, be placed on the third reading file.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes. We're back in second reading from the Committee of the Whole. Senator San Agustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after the deliberation of Bills Number 202-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing, and further amended on the Committee of the Whole, also Bills 170-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing, and further amended on the Committee of the Whole, and finally, for during the Committee of the Whole, Bill 172-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and With the recommendation, that the bills be placed on the third reading file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We will proceed with the second reading. We are now on Bill Number 151-36 COR. We're back on second reading with Resolution Number 151-36 LS. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to set aside Resolution Number 151-36 LS at the request of the main sponsor of the resolution.
On that, on that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 151-36 COR, and Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill Number 151-36 COR as substituted on the floor, as introduced by myself, Senator Tony Attia, Senator Chris Duaneus, and Senator Frank Gloss Jr., which is an act to amend Article 5 of Chapter 66, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Modernizing the Process and Penalties in Association with Unsafe and Derelict Buildings and Structures. Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On that motion to accept the substitute on-the-floor version of Bill 151-36, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 151-36 COR as substituted on the floor on third reading file, and I would like to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and colleagues, the intent of 151-36 is to amend an existing law, which is Article 5 of Chapter 66, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, amending it to modernizing the process and the penalties in association with unsafe and derelict built structures. This bill, or the original law, is back in the seventies, and pretty much over fourteen years, this has not been amended to help modernize, modernize the law. So the intent of 151-36 is to provide inspectors of the Department of Public Works some reasonable timelines to work with property owners of derelict structures and to remedy the problem. The second intent is to provide authority for stringent penalties to assure compliance with Guam laws regarding vacating, repairing, or demolishing unsafe buildings. These recommendations have come to us from the Department of Public Works and are asking us to please modernize this current law. The current law allows building officials to take action on derelict buildings by requiring to make it temporarily safe and fencing and boarding, or even to demolish or leveling. And we're seeing that this cost is paid by the general fund to replenish by the property owners in the form of a lien. Now, Bill 151-36, as substituted, and I thank my colleagues for looking at the substitute version, incorporates the recommendations that Department of Public Works Director, Mr. Vince Ariola, has recommended after talking to his team. DPW does support the substitute version of this bill. One of the changes that we did, per DPW's recommendation, is change the notification when making a finding from ten days to extend it to sixty days, to notify and writing the complete findings of the derelict building to the owner or to the occupant, to the leasing, to the mortgaging, and the agent. The DPW wants to ensure that they take all precautions in dealing with the structures or owners or whoever's in the occupant, to ensure that communications is made clear and that they can work with those involved. There was also the time extension if needed, just in case a property owner may have passed, or there's a pending probate in the case of this property, or there's no administrator for the property. So DPW really explained why they need the substitute version, per their recommendations, is to give them more flexibility, and that's why they support this bill. There's also a change in penalties to minimize, to offer a minimum and a maximum amount. Previously, we just had one amount there, but DPW rethought their recommendation and said, let's work between a thousand and ten thousand. Again, DPW wanted more flexibility, and that's why they're supporting these bills, this bill. And we all understand that derelict buildings bring many, many issues, right? We have dumping, we have fires, and I've lived one, I lived next to one for several years, and it was called the Waikiki Apartments, and I, in my, in my time there, next to my place, I saw that place catch on fire at least four times. But, you know, through the work of DPW, that, that place is no longer there, it's down to the ground. That was one of the first things they did. It's down to the ground. That was one of the first things they did. And we also know there are some illicit activities going on in these abandoned places, too. Overall, it adversely impacts property values for our neighbors with these structures, especially the beautification in the area. So I asked my colleagues, let's help DPW. Who supports this substitute bill? Let's also help our mayors and our island-wide beautification task force with the passage of this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. On Bill number 151-36COR as substituted on the floor, is there anyone who would like to be recognized? On the bill, is anyone would like to be recognized? Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, this bill, for some of you, long overdue. Thank you, Senator Moylan, and your co-sponsors. This bill is long overdue. There's been buildings, we need to start policing up our landowners and start cleaning up. But there is, there may be some technical corrections need to be made. I found on one paragraph there, they forgot the word "more than." They got the "nor" and the "than," and I just asked that Legal be able to do the one more proofreading and just make the correction, the appropriate correction. It's very simple. They missed the word "more." They got the "nor" and they got the "than." So it's just to make the correction. But other than that, the author of the bill and the co-sponsors, thank you. This bill is overdue, and I'm in full support of this bill. Thank you, Senator Moylan. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. We're going to take a five-minute recess. If you could please bring those concerns to Legal. Five-minute recess. Thank you, senators. We're back from our recess on Bill number 151-36COR. We've discovered there is a glitch in the version that was distributed on the floor, but the correct version is uploaded to the drive. But we're going to take a recess until tomorrow morning to make sure that everybody has the correct copy. It's on the drive. And if we could come back at 9:00, and that way we can still go into Committee of the Whole at 10:00. All right, so we're going to recess until 9:00 a.m. And please see the drive or the version that the clerks put on the floor. Sidus Masi.